Notice hereby given the City Council of City Alpine, Texas will hold a workshop and special meeting at 5:30 PM on May 10th, 2022 in the City Council chambers at 803 West Holland Avenue in the city of Alpine, Texas for the purpose of considering the attached agenda. This notice is posted pursuant to Texas Open Media Act Government Code Section 551.043. Public notice, the use of cellular phones and electronic equipment is prohibited in the City Council chambers during meetings of the City Council, except for the purpose explicitly authorized by state law, Texas Government Code Section 551.023. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with official rules of decorum for the City Council meetings. Available at www.cityofalpine.com decorum. Public comments are limited to agenda items only. Items who individuals who wish to address the City Council may do so by completing a public comment card and by placing the completed card on the City Secretary desk no later than five minutes before the commencement of the meeting. The public comment card may also be completed online at www.cityofalpine.com/councilcomments. A public comment card is not required for speakers who wish to comment on public carrying items. When speakers are acknowledged, please approach the microphone at the podium, state your name and word for the record. Public comments are limited to three means per person and a bell will signal the end of each speaker's time. Please conclude speaker comments promptly when the bell rings. The state law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda, but if appropriate, the council may schedule the topic for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attack on council members or city staff will be allowed. The mayor and/or city council members may call a point of order to stop personal attacks. Individual continues to personally attack an elected official or staff member in a meeting, they may be barred. All is speeded towards, please write for the pledge. Thank you all very much. City Secretary, do we have a forum?
Yes, sir. All council members are present here today. The notice of this meeting was posted on May 6th by 2:00.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let's start with the workshop. City Manager?
So today's workshop is on the city and department priorities and goals. One of the things I wanted to do was obviously the budget process differently. Usually the city manager goes to the departments and then we kind of interview with the council and it's a back and forth. I really wanted to give this opportunity to do this as one big group to ensure as we establish a budget for fiscal year 2223, that not only council, but the departments are on the same page. You'll notice as we go through the different slides, there's kind of a theme that goes with their priorities and goals. And I think it's really important to know that they took the time to kind of think, what do I need? We all know funding is very limited, but they're really asking for the things to do their jobs. They're not asking for the big extra picture items. They just want to be able to work. They want to do their jobs. And the other big piece is just employees, staffing, training. We can hire anyone and everyone, but if they don't know how to do something, it's really hard to get them to complete a project. It takes longer, it's more explaining, whereas if we provided that continuing training, that would help. I did ask all of the departments to be available to come tonight. Mr. Guzman wasn't available for family reasons, but the rest of them are here to ask questions to fill in where your concerns are. And I'm glad that we have a great representation from the public as well, because some of these do deal with the public. The big one, of course, is pay being. Our water infrastructure, our wastewater infrastructure, how do we ensure that our residents have the services they need? And that really is to provide the resources for them to do it. So in your black folders, you were given exactly what was presented to me by the departments with a more detail. They had goals and then their tasks that could accomplish it. They had strategies. They all took it from a different perspective than how they presented it, which I thought was wonderful. Reality, they all list a lot of things, equipment wise, that they needed. So I'm going to start off kind of running through the slides fairly fast and they will be available online as well. And we can provide copies to the council so that we can have a really robust conversation and pick each other's brains with having the department heads here. So administration, these come down from me and Gio. Gio has some very specific ones. I wanted to look at it from a little bit broader, the city as a whole. And the main one for me right now is professional and committed workforce. We struggle hiring people and we struggle retaining them. And I would love for us to establish a competitive pay and benefits to attract and engage responsive, customer oriented, innovative and effective workforce. Today alone, I have probably been the most hated person with some of our departments, because I have to say no. The money's not there, the policy's not there, there's not that path to move employees to get more funds, to get better benefits, to move up in the workforce. We, in the past five years, have had three employee handheld or hand policies, handbooks, sorry. That makes it really confusing when you've been here those full five years and you went from having structured pay and benefits to even further structure to no structure. So it makes it a little bit hard to be able to, which one applies? I had certification pays in the last one, but I don't have them in this one. Why were they removed? How do we include them? We are currently working on trying to get a better handbook in place, ensure that we cover all of these aspects of aspects of every department, not just the ones who have required licensing, but the ones that will encourage employees to, hey, I do want to get better at what I'm doing. Is there a license available? And the second big one is sound infrastructure. I'm a broken record. We need to improve our infrastructure. This is water, wastewater, this is our roads. To have an adequate system in place that, you know, we can maintain it, we can meet both the current and the future demands. If you haven't been contacted, and I know Keith may bring this up in his report, you know, we have parts of town that weren't properly developed for future expansion, so there's no access to utilities. It's in the city limits, but there's no access and our ordinance requires that to gain the access, they have to pay for the infrastructure to be put in. This is 40 grand for some people. These are huge expenses that keep coming up, but unfortunately, the city didn't plan to expand. We're expanding. We need to look at that for the future with if we put an infrastructure in five, 10, 15, 20 years, it may all be connected. We kind of piecemealed it. We put in infrastructure, they would build, and then we would forget the next couple lots next to it. Well, then the person buys a lot and they have no access. And the third one is a huge one. In light of everything that's happened with the city, when I first came into the city, the city was in trouble. City manager resigned, finance director been indicted. It was a struggle with finances. We were investigated. Financial stability is a big issue and it's a big concern and we need a long range financial plan. We have policies that have been approved in the past, but they've never been followed. I'd love to see us get back on board, clean them up and follow them so that when we have these goals and priorities, it's not where's the money going to come from? If this is where it's at, let's accomplish the goal and priority. Of course, that would be initiating appropriate reserve levels, competitive tax rates to ensure that the city has the available funds. This is the hardest part. You don't always want to go out for debt, which is what the city had done. We put a hold on it. We've paid off huge chunks of the debt. We're now back in the position where we need to look at these things. We need to look at taking money and putting it aside, and if that means maybe we reduce some of the projects we complete for a few years, it gives us that build to be able to accomplish for the future. And poor Marcina, and she's here tonight to take notes so that we can have that one-on-one to figure out what money we can go after. It is becoming harder for us to go out for money. We are not economically advantaged, so some of those disadvantaged, thank you, some of those we don't qualify for for grants. There's some thresholds we don't meet. We are considered, you know, a rural area. We're dependent on funding coming from other state agencies that tend to maybe miss us. If you haven't read some of the material out there, the Water Development Board is supposed to give 10% to rural areas and rural areas have received less than 1%. So the money's just not coming our direction and we need to ensure we encourage that. And then the other one, of course, is education and training. And this is just the ability to attend training and conferences that provide professional growth and value to the city. It's a hit and miss with departments and what's available. The pandemic really set a lot of departments back by not having that one-on-one. You can't learn to operate a maintainer via video where you want them hands-on out there actually controlling it. There's a wealth of professional organizations that our departments can take advantage of that you maybe attend one meeting a year or two, but it's that networking that provides them with, hey, how do I? And you've got 300-plus thousand cities basically coming back and saying, oh, we've had that happen too. So it's encouraging not only the admin, but for the departments to take advantage of that. Records, we Gio does an awesome job with records and his part-time records clerk for having no system in process or in place. We are now trying to digitalize. We had hired a company in the past to take a huge section of our records to digitalize them so that we can find them. We all get that phone call with, well, do you have an easement? Well, we have to go find that. Or does the city own this? Having to go find that. And being able to have that readily available will actually make things move faster. Our biggest time delay is research, is going back and finding what was done, how it happened and moving forward. Currently, he operates off of Excel files and P S.
PDS?
PDS, click scan, which is where what we have digitally filed currently, and then we have Municho, which is all of our ordinance is online. But to have an actual records management software where it helps with indexing, everything kind of get categorized and labeled and numbered and it's a quick search to find it. And of course inventory. Currently, we operate with every department's partially responsible for their inventory for records. This is critical and non-critical. The city secretary is the main records management individual, so it is the responsibility to make sure all of the court records, all the police records, all of our financial records, all of our utility records, our wastewater records, our water records are all properly maintained, categorized. We know where they're at so that when we apply for grants, we pull the data, it's right there. But having that inventory and understanding exactly where everything's at. And the reason this is this is critical is because then we go into our third one, our fourth one, which is storage. We have records in three facilities in Alpine, all over from City Hall to the old Sunshine House to the Water Department. It would be ideal to have them in one section so that when people are trying to find something, they're not going from building to building to building to locate it and hoping it's there. And then, of course, another big one you'll see throughout this is the training and education and then just improving on our policies, putting in something in place that allows employees and residents to understand, this is how you obtain records. This is our process to keep records. This is how long we have to keep them. We do follow all of the state required guidelines, but having that education and training, so when an employee comes in and, well, I need something from 1945, well, the city doesn't have to keep it if it's a certain record. If it has historical value, we do keep it. Peril's a big one that we have to keep. Financials are a big one. Of course, all of our property records are big. But to have that education and understanding, there's a whole training on emails. Emails are open records. They are a type of record that we have to maintain. We do have the ability through Google, because they have Google Archive, that allows us to ensure that we do keep. We don't delete email accounts because we don't want to delete information. We want to make sure we keep everything and it pertains to the city in one place. Municipal court, we do have a new clerk, so the big push for her would be training and education. There is a whole certification program. You can become a municipal court clerk level one, two, and three, which provides you all of that additional information to be able to handle the day-to-day operations of a court. It also provides, what I'm hoping is that if I do better, I move up, I have more pay, I have that incentive. Office space, we are still pending transition with the finance utility. If you've ever walked into City Hall, she's kind of in the corner right when you walk in, right next to all of the utility billing. So she's very limited to what she can and can't do. And it gets a little crazy up there, especially when people are trying to pay bills or trying to pay court costs. You've got utility workers coming in, trying to get work orders. It can get a little overwhelming. Records management, I know Mr. Pan and Judge Cole have worked towards the purging of older cases. This is important. This allows us to stay up to date current, and we're not always having to backtrack to figure out what happened. We just keep it moving forward. And then accessibility and transparency. This is the ability of resources to continue to provide the court users online information, improve website and streamline process of procedures. These are our standing operating orders. This is, you know, if I need to pay a ticket, I can pay it online. I can pay it by phone. I can come in person. This is just making sure that everything is available and easily out there for court users to come in and take care of it. Finance, the big one is software. I am the big proponent with, we have a system that we can afford and I'm okay with that. But in reality, most of the time that the finance department is recreating reports for Excel and spreadsheets in order to provide counsel and anyone else with information. It allows us to do the minimum necessary. It keeps our financials, but it takes us a lot of extra time when someone calls and says, hey, I need to know how much you spend on uniforms for every department. We have to print multiple reports. I can't print one report that gives me a final total. There's nothing wrong with the fundamentals of the software we have. It would just be nice as we move forward and as we improve the city to be able to also connect to other departments. Everything is manually entered, which leaves room for error. When we do journal entries, we're taking information from billing, we're taking information from courts and manually putting it in and then having to reconcile it because we've manually entered it. So we add steps because the information's not coming directly in. Staffing, we are growing with the demands for purchasing and cash management and all of the required state and federal procedures and regulations. Before, it was fairly easy. You didn't have all the extra procurement steps. As the city has grown and taken on these additional federal grants, they require very specific reporting, very specific procedures. They want to know that every penny is spent according to how they say we can spend it, which means documentation has to be done, reconciliations have to be done, the overall management has to be done. There has to be the staff to be able to go in there and ensure we're following our own policies. Purchasing is a never-ending battle. We need the purchase orders, we need the quotes, we need, you know, if it's over 50,000, we need to make sure we go out for procurement correctly. More and more of what we are doing is over 50,000, which means we have to have a person in place to do RFPs. I did those before and I've delegated the task, but this is new to some employees and they're learning, okay, so the scope of the work comes from the department, but the rest of it comes from finance. This is all our legal side. This is what covers the city. The state has required we follow hub rules, conflict of interest rules. We want to make sure that, you know, underutilized businesses, which is the hub, all these things that we need to include in there so that we protect the city. Payment bonds, performance bonds, when do you use them? Do you have to use them? What exemptions are there to the RFP? It's a lot of information for one person to handle. The big training and education to ensure that the staff that we're hiring and that we're bringing in are up to date with all of the changes coming down. It's not just state laws anymore, but it's also federal laws that we do have to follow. And then office space, it's the pending transition. We're currently without water again in the Sunshine House. We did have another water leak that is being worked on and we're pending Big Ben telephone to come in and finalize the phone and internet, and then the transition can start taking place. Any questions as of now?
Questions to pause. I don't know what they all want to hear. The consistent handbook, maybe consistent. Isn't that easy?
So that's what we're trying to do. We actually have reached out to a lot of the departments to get a little feedback, because they're the ones who handle their employees. We're ensuring that all of the state and federal guidelines are in there that we're required to have. We're also putting in the unfortunate consequence section that basically outlines if you make a mistake or something happens, this is the process. It's not one department does it one way, another department does it another way. It's no, this is the process. We're also updating our differential pays. Currently, the handbook only offers differential pay for law enforcement, water, wastewater, and if you have a CDL. Prior handbook offered differential pay for every department based on levels of certification available.
Why didn't we come, why was that, why was that handbook run away?
It was a combination of the old and the new together and parts of it were just removed.
And the steps, we've talked about that before, where they have a step that they follow. But the way it was explained to me was one department has one way to do steps and another department has another way. Can we not make those uniform?
That's what we're working on. We also have to take into consideration inflation, guys. I know we try to look at salaries based on our population within our area. It's not realistic. We have to look at the economy as a whole. Last year ended with a 7.1.2% inflation rate. The year before was 2.1. Inflation's a big deal, but when it comes to employees, we also have to balance it out with, we want them to complete projects. We want them to provide services. The cost of the material and the equipment and things have all increased significantly as well. So the step scale has to take into consider where we're at, where we want to be, and then how does it affect those coming in?
You're still working to get them consistent.
Yes.
And then the software, why don't you just buy? You need software, let's go get it.
So.
My opinion also, this is my opinion.
The finance structure has changed significantly and I was asked to do an RFP a year and a half ago and I didn't, or actually two years, I did inform the individuals, I'm not qualified to do an ERP for finance. There are so many more specifics to it because of the changes in GATP, which is our Government Accounting Standards Board, which dictates how we actually handle government accounting. Capital purchases, capital leasing, these are all having to be recorded differently. I would love to steal from another city and I've been working with several, they contracted out for this RFP. It's a huge one. This is all of your financial software. It's everything. You're also looking at it if we, so Martha just switched and they spent 100 grand. They don't have.
In the long run, that pays off.
It does, and it's initially coming up with the money to pay for it.
I'm sure Marcia can find it in a grain. Just my thoughts.
We would also like to go with the software that includes your permit, your municipal court, your animal control, your airport, your utility billing, and possibly records management.
Would that not be a good thing to make debt of? Does that not help us? I mean, you're saying we need some debt. Well, there you go. That's a good one.
I prefer not to for that, but yes, it's a system that the city does need.
Maybe some of the statewide purchasing pools that we could use and also if we have more and more purchases over 50,000.
And we are members of six currently. And we're trying to encourage those that are vendors that, you know, have had a history with the city to join those pools, which means they've already been vetted by the state or the co-op that they're encouraged to join. Moving on, any more questions? For public safety, agency relationships, continue working with entities within the region to improve the safety of our community, including Alpine ISD, Bruce County Sheriff's Office, Loyola State University, and all other local law enforcement agencies. Staffing, Daryl has done really good with keeping a full staff. This was one of the highest turnover departments for a while. He's focused on ability to recruit and maintain certified police officers, dispatchers, and animal control officers. So in order to do this, one of his big pushes was staff development, which is providing a very specific onboarding for the police department and having available funds to coordinate officer dispatch and ACO training to ensure that when we onboard them and we bring them into the city, that they're going to move up. They're going to get all those certifications that makes them the best police officer, animal control officer there is. Telecommunication upgrades. This is access to resources like IT equipment and software to continue improvements with the 911 dispatchers. Currently, Animal Services does not have any software to assist with the managing of their shelter. They do that all manually, keeping track of animals in, animals out, their food, vets, everything. And then, of course, the big one is community development. This is to continue to provide the community with educational events covering public safety and participation in key programs such as Blue Santa, Halloween Pumpkin Patch. I'm going to, he'll be doing a report, but I'm going to rain on it. He just recently cleaned up the graffiti that was under the bridge at Coconut. We had some vandalism happen last week that the police department immediately went out there with the help of the street department and got that taken care of while the graffiti was removed. These are kind of the community development projects he wants to continue and keep in place. Public works, when you look at Eddie's list, you will notice that 90% of it is equipment. It is the dire need of mowers and trucks and tools and heavy equipment. Our departments have done what they can with what they have for so long. I believe our hot patch box has been down. It's been in and out of the shop for several months, just trying to get it back to where it needs to be to be able to patch the puddles. We're having to constantly maintain at a higher rate to get things to work so that we can do the services that need to be provided. Staffing, back to what we just discussed, they need certified or heavy equipment operators. They need to know that when I bring in someone who can operate a backhoe, a maintainer, patching machine, paving, zipper, all the different terms, that they're not starting off at 1350. That we're providing them that extra because they do have the certification. They took the time in their lives to get that and we want to encourage that. We want to pull them from the oil field and bring them to Alpine and have them work for us. They also would like more worker one and twos to allow for multiple crews to do multiple projects. When you have a patching job and they go out and they patch, you know, certain sections of the town, you know, you have three or four people. When you have a staff of five, it doesn't leave you three or four more people to go patch somewhere else or to go maintain something else or to take on some paving. Training and education, Eddie and I have talked about this and he loves the idea as far as, let's get them trained. But let's bring in companies that can show them, has had on the job training, get them to move up. I know in the past we bring back employees to help us because we don't have people who know how to use a maintainer. Working with the different vendors that, you know, if we go out for a nice, you know, paving equipment, can you bring the training to us? I have email, text, they do have a trainer that they bring in. If you've ever been out to the Y, kind of see where they practice. There's a big pile of asphalt. They bring in a trainer with maintainers and rollers and their equipment and that's where they practice. You know, it's how do we jump into their little pool of training and get that as well? And then another big thing is the facility remodel. It's utilizing the space they have to do more, to have a well being, that should be shop, not ship. Carpenter shop. We're going to ship things to the rain today in storage area. And they're all crammed in there trying to do. And they're all crammed in there trying to do fifteen things at once, but to open up the space that they have and actually be able to utilize it for the different things. Eddie's department, if you didn't know, uh he maintains all of our facilities for the most part as well. Um with the exception of maybe the gas department, they do a lot of their stuff in-house. Um that's a lot. It it's fixing our cabinetry, it's our lighting, i- it's our flooring, it's the painting, it's you know, everything's falling apart outside. How do we fix it? If they can't do it themselves, they they do bring people in. But they maintain all of our, on top of paving, on top of um parks projects, on top of everything else. So it's important that when we start looking at this budget is how do we expand and utilize what funding we have and resources we have to the best capability. Public utilities, um number one wastewater treatment plant. And we are actively working with other outside agencies on funding opportunities. We are starting to lay the groundwork to get the material information, data, resources we need to move forward with possible funding options, whether it be to go out for debt, whether it be a grant loan. Whether we pray and pray and pray that the, you know, we fall under the infrastructure bill and they'll give the money to us. Um but we've already taken the initial steps. That evaluation was crucial. That's the the seal of, hey, you have problems and this is an engineer, not only me and a utility director and all the employees telling you, but someone actually outlining it and saying this is how you can improve it. Um it is really important that we move forward with that project. Um the city has done great with putting money aside for for the initial steps. On the aerator and bar screen, the first part of the ARPA funding, that was dedicated to the wastewater, which will cover that expense. This is no additional expense to the taxpayers. This isn't money coming from rates, this isn't money coming from property. This is money that came down from the federal government that we automatically allocated. Um we do um expect to have that second payment coming in, which will go before council to allocate as well. And the water main infrastructure. Um the great thing about public utilities is the federal and the state government come down on them all the time. Um most recent, of course, was C N F L three with having to have the emergency operations plan and being able to revive the PSI of twenty percent or more. Of course, needing the generators to back up. Um it's kind of one of those, we're gonna tell you what to do, but you're gonna have to figure out how to pay for it. Um the Environmental Protection Agency came down on the US as a whole and we are now required to identify and replace all lead and copper. And I know Keith will bring this up as well. Um within our city, this is a big project with no resources. This isn't one that we can just, you know, oh, we'll get to it later, we'll 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 piecemeal it, you know, we've got fifteen years to fix it. No, we have till October sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Um this is another one that, once we get a better idea of what we're looking at and the plans to move forward, um looking for for funding opportunities, whether it be through the Water Development Board, through a grant loan, whether it be through the USDA, um but trying to find a way to cover the expenses without it affecting our our community base. Um but this one is required by law. And we know that we have lead pipes out there, copper pipes out there. Um we were unfortunate that we didn't get the uh study done by Park Hill Smoothing, Park Hill Smith and Cooper um that may have assisted in this. Um but we know that we need to move forward with it. And the other big thing for them is equipment. It's the replacement and and adding of equipment needed to maintain the current staffing levels and needs. Um most of what Keith has got on his priorities and goals isn't things outside what they don't need now. It's, like I said, these aren't wish lists at this point. Um staffing, um this is a huge one throughout the departments. It's just the ability to recruit and maintain certified employees. We lose employees to other places because they pay more. Um we have odd hours for our field workers. They're on call. Um they don't necessarily work eight to five. We would've wished they'd work eight to five, but maybe they work eight to one AM if we have a water leak. Um it's addressing these concerns, recruiting them, and ensuring that we have the benefits and availability to move them up and it it make them feel appreciative. Um and one way to do that, of course, is education and training. Um just to ensure that they continue education training for current and future employees is to earn and maintain certifications and licenses. In order to work for the water department, you have to have your D license within the first year. That is our current policy. Um I did never sat down and take an exam for T C Q, but I know based on feedback from employees and staff, they're not easy. Some of them are downright hard. Um so we wanna make sure that i- if we're gonna make requirements, that we ensure we provide that education and training to get them to pass. Um of course, the big incentive is currently they get a dollar i- if they pass each of the levels. Um T C Q is real stickler, we know it. You know, we have to have a B according to our license for a wastewater treatment plan. There are so few V licenses in the state of Texas. We need to take advantage of it. We we wanna, whoever gets it, we wanna ensure that they're covered. We give them something. Um they're doing us the favor. So I definitely want that to be considered and thought of as we go through the budget. The airport, um gotta love the airport. Their their big priority is the capital improvement projects. And we have sent the Tex-ot Aviation Department multiple letters of interest, which basically outline, hey, we wanna take advantage of any funding you have available and these are what we're interested in completing. Um this is a priority to ensure that the city has the financial means to support the continued grant projects. Um we still have the pending lighting construction, which is ninety-five thousand from the city that we need to cover. Um we have an airport layout plan that will allow us to expand. We have an A Ross relocation, which will allow us to move the AWAS so that we can expand. Um we also have looked at um five, two, three, um making improvements on that. Um getting part of the payment program. Planes don't land when there's potholes and cracks. Um so we have to do our due diligence to ensure that those are taken care of. Um these are ones that are coming from Tex-ot Aviation. Um the city at some point could invest in putting in a hangar out there that's owned by the city. That's a guaranteed income. Those are rented out, whether it be a rental day-to-day use or whether it be a long-term. Um majority of airports do own at least one or two hangars that they can utilize for additional income. Equipment and facility maintenance. Um the airport currently uses what is considered the Dearing software. Mr. Dearing is no longer in Alpine and the software hasn't been updated probably since two thousand nine? Ten? Way before any of us. Um if it crashes, we have no way to maintain the fuel system and and inventory and how we pay for things unless Abel's an expert in Excel and QuickBooks and can just take that all on. Um they also need a a fuel system upgrade. Um we do have above-ground tanks. Um there are projects and funding sources to remove those from above ground and put them underground. Um it does have, you know, some safety concerns with them being above ground. But if you've ever gone out there to fuel a plane, I think the fuel pumps are probably from the sixty seventies. Um it is an older system that they're constantly having to maintain and fix. Um and then the credit cards, this is a whole nother system. Um it's getting those updated and and allowing them to have. It's not your typical, I'm gonna call Square and Square is gonna, you know, let me have a a little card, I'm gonna use my iPhone. So this is a whole system that attaches to the pump like a a fuel station or gas station. Um training and education. Um the available funds to have education and training, the big one is fuel safety and airport management. Um we run our airport and it's not, you know, dedicated to anyone else or outsourced. We actually manage the whole facility, which means Abel and Riley need to ensure that they know all the FAA rules, guidelines, everything changes. And there there's training opportunities and then they just completed a bunch of them from our current fuel supplier for fuel safety. We we take advantage of the free, but there are the one or two conferences that they really should be attending that provides them all the access to understanding all the federal and state guidelines. Um those are important. Um tourism. Um I initially had it as one priority and goal and that's to attract tourists. Um looking at what discussed with Heather and Chris over the past few months, it's continued improvements to the visitor center. Um since we've done some really nice improvements out there, it kinda makes the inside and the front side look a little bit less nice um when you have such a beautiful surrounding around it. And of course, advertising is a big one. We are required by state law that fifty-one percent or more of our revenue coming from tourism has to be used for advertising. And we're not talking local advertising. We need to attract, to bring in, so it needs to be outside our region. Um we're moving slowly. I'm kind of a back and forth with Chris, which should we do it in print? Should we go digital? Um he balances out trying to look at both aspects um to get people in, either if it's a digital media platform or if it's a print um platform. And then, of course, training and education. Um hospitality is 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 a huge, you know, industry. Um this is where your your tourism lies in, is hospitality. Um but the ability to attend training conferences and shows and to understand how do we attract people, what can the city offer when we have visitors come in? Sometimes it's just not a place to eat and sleep. They wanna know what makes Alpine Alpine. Why do you want me to stay here? Is it the shopping? Is it the murals? What do we have that brings them here? And the last uh big department is is the gas utility. Um their number one priority is is mandated. Um they they don't get a choice on this one. Um it's the replacement of the steel lines with poly lines. Um they are required to replace so many feet um every year. In Fort Davis and Alpine, they've met their requirements and sometimes go a little beyond that. But it's ensuring that that this is a continued importance and that it doesn't get overlooked. And then as we budget, the funding's available for them to buy all the material they need, prices are going up. Um another big project um that they would like to see sooner than later, preferably like tomorrow, is the um rectifier. This is our catho- I can never say that word. Cathodic protection, thank you. Um the golf course has a rectifier. Um the last time we replaced one, it was slightly at fifty thousand dollars. Um Randy got two quotes in today and the lowest one is at seventy thousand. Um most of it's the cost of drilling. This is to protect our gas lines. And we don't want them to explode. We don't want them to, these are important accord- according to Randy, but they are. Um and then, of course, training and education. Um for them, they're required. They have to have certain um certifications. We are very lucky to have two welders who are certified to weld on pipelines. Um that is a big deal in this area because they can go to bigger pipelines. Um these are the ones who can come in and actually weld when the gas is moving and and seal up those leaks when necessary. And then there's a whole slew of information and training that they're required to have just to understand, you know, your operations manual, your safety of it. And it's for all of them. It's not like their their admin site has to, you know, I can sit back and do nothing. They all have to have it and it's all required. Um this is a big expense every couple of years. Um one year it was twelve grand to get them all recertified. So it's ensuring as we go through this budget process and and sitting down, um when you see some of these bigger numbers, understanding why, because this is one of their priorities and it's also one of the ones that are required. And then just thank you to everyone. As mentioned at the very beginning, most of their priorities are are really just the operating needs. Um the the equipment, the staffing, the appreciation of the employees. Um as the budget gets put together, I wanna ensure that what you guys find priorities and what they find as priorities are balanced and that we can come to that common ground. But also, when you get that first draft and you're looking at it, you're not looking at like, why did we all of a sudden increase by forty percent? Or, you know, what's the reasoning? We're working on our end to ensure that what we present has the explanation. Why are we asking for more employees? Why are we asking for specific equipment? What priorities were addressed from council? What priorities were addressed from the departments? Um but that way, it's kind of be the storybook for the city. So that you can see as we move into the next year where your money is going for as a resident, but also to understand we are, we're strapped and we're struggling. It's hard to get employees to stay when, you know, someone gets offered four dollars more an hour to go somewhere else. And we don't want them to, we we truly don't. But we wanna ensure that what we provide them is sound, that it's acceptable and and that they understand, oh, you know, I just got hired, but I can move up the first year. Or maybe I can't move up the first year, but the second year I can. Or if I actively seek a certification, that the city is gonna, you know, acknowledge that and utilize it and perhaps give me some extra funds. Um there's the whole employee benefit side of it as well. We tried to sell that we have insurance, we have dental vision and medical. Uh we have life insurance, we have the task card, which provides an additional little resource for out-of-pocket medical expenses. And this is your band-aid. You know, the city covers up to five hundred dollars of it. Um we provide uniforms, we have cell phones, eighteen holidays, vacation, sick leave. Um we want them to come work here, we want them to retire from here, but we wanna also balance it out. And when we do hire, we wanna ensure that, you know, they have that tractor they need to 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 do their job. So kind of reiterating, most of what they need are operations. I- it's operating. It's not long-term, um except for utilities. Utilities is very long-term. Um getting the infrastructure, you know, in a situation where they're maintaining it and they're not constantly putting out fires. So I have them here. If you guys wanna ask questions, you guys wanna add to it? If you wanna turn the light on, Daryl? Oh, yes. Um we just recently were audited by the Railroad Commission. Um it is a very big deal. Um they come with penalties when we're in trouble. Um Randy's department has yet to fail one. Um this year again, they were cleared. There were no findings and there were no issues. Um they work hand in hand with the Railroad Commission. They also have T M L audits that come in and audit to make sure that our system is safe. Um those are, those are big deals. Those are, and it it's interesting that you brought it up, Jerry, because we were supposed to be skipped a year because we've passed all of the the priors, but I guess that they're just so good, they wanted to do it again. But but these are huge accomplishments for that department. Um other cities aren't as fortunate. And then they have to pay penalties and fines and they have to fix them within a short, very short period of time. And you have a department of five people. And they're running two systems. You have Fort Davis and you have Alpine. I wanna thank everybody that took the time to fill these out and provide the information to us. Want y'all to know that we will definitely keep everything that y'all provide it to us in mind and we'll do what we can.
Making a great report because it informs the public the challenges that we face as a city and staying within our budget restraints and how, you know, we're not only trying to secure money, we're also going after grants. And that we paid off a lot of the, a lot of the monies that we're owed. Now we're in a position where we can start looking for grants and stuff like that. So it's not just, I got a pothole and it needs to be fixed. There's more to it behind that pothole than anything else. Uh a leaky water, uh main, stuff like that. It takes money, it takes employees that are knowledgeable and certified in how to repair those in a timely manner. So, yeah, you know, kudos to our employees because they do struggle with what they have to uh to use in their day-to-day work. And so I think this is something that's crucial, the public should know, that it's not all that easy. It's not all, you know, not a problem, pick up the phone, file a complaint, it's gonna be done. There's, you know, equipment involved, you know, things like that. Monies, it takes monies to fix streets, it takes monies for everything. And one of the things in my bucket list is the wastewater department. I've been there, you know, numerous times and seen it. That to me is a top priority and that came with a bill of what, four point six bill, a million dollars?
And that's just to get it.
That's just to get it to work. That's not, you know.
That's not adding to it.
That's just maintaining it where it can function right. You know, it's been band-aided for so long, everybody goes and puts a patch on it and it runs, but one day this thing's gonna collapse. And the city's gonna be in a world of hurts. Okay, so it it's a, it's a major, major project that we have to get accomplished and we need to do it soon. It's been gone far too long, just like any of the infrastructure here in Alpine. Yeah, everything's been piecemeal, then it's been band-aided. But now it's coming to a head. Streets hadn't been uh resurfaced or sealed coated in thirty-some-odd years. And all of a sudden, we start doing it and we start finding that there's more streets that need the work done, you know, and so forth. And people complain, well, how come my street's not done? Well, it takes money. And we're just trying to catch up with what had not been taken care of in the past. So kudos to the street department, to the administration, the council for doing a great job in approving these projects. They're crucial to maintaining the city to run and just with a basic, basic uh how would I put it? Bare minimum necessities, yes. So we're, you know, we're not out of the woods by a long shot. We're still in the So we're, you know, we're not out of the woods by a long shot. We're still in the woods and we're trying to dig ourselves out with what we have. So, you know, uh, I I get the complaints all the time. What about this and what about that? Well, you know. I'm glad you came out with your report today because it'd be on on Zoom and also on a YouTube to let people know what it takes to run a city. It's just not showing up for a council meeting and, you know, voting for certain things and all that. There's a lot behind the scenes that need to be done in order for the city to run, so. Uh, I I give a great thanks to everybody that works for the city for all the hard work they do every day, day in, day out. So thank you guys and ladies. So through your report.
I'm through. If you guys have any items you wanna discuss, if any of the staff department directors wanna mention anything. This is their opportunity to kind of discuss with you, um, one-on-one.
Thank you, counsel. The one thing that we could continue continuously talked about is our most important asset is our people. I am very fortunate. I am one of few law enforcement agencies in Texas that is fully staffed. I am truly blessed and but at the same time, I know there's agencies seeking out my guys to try to hire them for better pay and um and and so they know I can't compete with that. And these guys are willing to stick it out and work for our community and um. You know, I was, I was watching the uh, the county of Somerville was just, is going through some some processes where they're trying to uh approve their officers' pay. And they did a uh pricing uh pay comparison with other agencies. And they were seventeen percent below the average of that, of that area. And the one thing that that most people don't understand it, and I know I can speak for the streets and for utilities and wa- uh water and all the other ones, but as far as the law enforcement. Law enforcement, we wear a vest every day and we have the risk of of not coming home that that day. And right now, law enforcement is is one of the highest rated uh occupations that commit suicide. And the train I had this this past week brought that to light even more to me. Um, and so I think it's important that we make sure that we represent all our city employees the best that we can to make sure that they have a a good working environment, that they have uh good, good pay that that they can live off of and also good, good equipment. I, it's, it's, it's what they all want. They wanna be here and they wanna work and they wanna, they just have the the tools to get things done. And I think we are truly blessed as far as the city uh to have people like that that wanna work for us. And you know, it, we continue to, we had training every month this uh since I've been on board and uh the the guys enjoy the training. They get to to build their career and uh it's important that we we notice that and that we uh help them out as well. And I thank y'all.
Thank you, chief, but it takes leadership to keep good employees and recognizing your employees. And so that's one thing that uh that now the city as a whole is doing, is taking care of their employees and providing the good leadership that's been lacking for quite a number of years. So thank you to you guys around the field. You all do a great job. And I know you put your lives on the line every day. You never know. But thank you guys out there. Any more questions? Marks?
I have remarks. Eddie was in here last year and we promised him the world and I, I don't know that he got it. We promised the airport the world. And I don't know that he got it because I don't know how to give it to y'all. If we had about thirty-five million dollars, we could fix these problems. And we don't. We don't have these oil-based tax bases from all these people just right over there. We don't have that money and we're not gonna get that money. So we need to figure out a way to give them, the employees, the equipment they need. And we said it last year and it's the exact same. You can just copy that and just, it's the same thing. And I don't want that next year. I wanna come in here next year and then go, God, I got like a new set of tires, something. They gotta have something or these employees aren't gonna stay. They keep getting in stuff and having to get under them and work on them. They're gonna go somewhere else and make four more dollars an hour and it'll start right up. So that's where I would like to see our priority. That is a big priority. And like I said, we promised it last year. Do you get it? Do you get anything? And I understand we don't have the money, but there's our debt. We'll do debt. Forget your software. I just know it's, these are the same list and I'm sure it'll be the same list in twenty-five years. When I go to those trainings, every little town, other side of Texas, their guys need the same thing you need. And the the money's not there. That's a sign of the times, but we need to try to get it there. I don't know how. More thoughts, so, you know.
And I think Judy Zee Loon, we were at a conference in Belmeray last Friday. And uh, is it last Friday? The twenty-ninth. And uh, of course, you got Belmeray, you got Fort Stockton, you got Andrews, you got Middle and Odessa. And they're out there gloating and all the stuff they're doing and whatnot. Yeah, we wanna move to Andrews, yeah. And they even have their own lobbyists. Uh, how about that? And so we're sitting there and we're going like, here's Alpine. And we just make it ends meet with what we have. But these guys are gloating with all the money they have that that's been coming in, coming in from the oil companies and whatnot. It it kinda makes you sad that we don't have that.
But we also have the most employees standing up there too, showing that we love Alpine. So I don't know that matters. You love a lot of things and not support it. So we're trying. I, I don't know how we do it, but I think, I think this council is ready to do it. We're all ready to do it. We all wanna do it. Get after it, Megan.
Not a problem. Okay, anything else?
I don't have anything to do with it.
Okay, workshop is adjourned. All regular beaten tour. I will start with public comments.
Do not have any public comment requests.
No public comments. Okay, presentations and proclamations. We have none. I don't have a report. City attorney.
Organization and cleaning up things which are risky. Doing a good job of making sure we have to get rid of all the old cases. We've got the court well organized, I think. I think it's done well over the last year. Uh, I guess for us to continue to be efficient and serve the needs of the city as well as the public here in Alpine. We uh as you all know, we got the T D S contract, couple of the other big contracts done and that's behind us. And you'll uh get some more information from Megan and me later uh in the meeting and executive session. Settling the part hill matter behind, getting that behind us. And so I think we're gonna do that. I'm gonna compliment Megan. She's got a, a good staff.
Okay, any comments? Thank you, sir. Yes, we want to see manager report. I know you're dying.
My shortest one, I promise. I'll just speak really fast. But that's a hard thing when there's so much information. Um, elections. Um, did I skip the two slides, guys? Um, the votes are in. Um, I do wanna thank everyone who participated and came out and voted in the city elections. I know it was a little bit confusing this year when you have three different elections going on in three different locations too, within this own building. And the unofficial result uh results are available on our website. It breaks it down by ward precinct. It has the percentages, um, all the detailed information. We had a total of seven hundred and forty-four votes. Um, we currently have two provisional and one federal postcard outstanding. Um, election board will meet this Friday to determine whether or not to approve or reject the provisional ballots. And if we never receive the federal postcards, then obviously it does not uh apply. Um, the official votes um are canvassed on May seventeenth um at our regularly scheduled city council meeting, which upon our official approval, newly elected and re-elected council members and our new mayor will be sworn in for their two-year terms. So I hope to see the same crowd at the next meeting, which is next week. And a big thank you. Um, Mayor Ramos has been active with the city of Alpine more than we probably know. But for the past six years, he has been our mayor. Um, it has been a very eventful, wonderful, um, unique six years. And he has dedicated his time and committed to the community of Alpine and this region. So I think it's important, um, this is his last official full-length meeting. So we wanted to do something special just for him, um, to take a moment to thank you. Um, and we want everyone to join us for cake. We did schedule in a little recess specifically so that it, we asked that you stay for the the length of the meeting so that you could take time to congratulate him. And he may be out as mayor, but we encourage him to still participate in the city activities. Um, we've got plenty of boards and commissions, um, but to stay active within our community. Um, you've seen him in the paper. You see him in the council. Um, he he's a vital member of our society. And we thank you very much. We do have some cake and you will be missed.
Thank you very much. It's been my honor to serve for mayor of the city for six, for six years. Um, actually was longer than that when I first ran. It's been total nine years when I got involved with the community and I've stayed involved with it. But six years as mayor of the city. And I wanna uh special say special thanks. And that's to the voter turnout that we had this uh past election. Uh, it was seven hundred plus. Normally, there are like two hundred votes or no votes at all. I ran, I think, two years in a row uh unopposed. One, I received a ton of votes, but it was because it was a national election and our city ballot was there, so I, that doesn't count. But uh, yeah, voter turnout has been quite dismal in the past and that's something that every time there's an election, I always put an article in the paper. That, I mean, it's your right to vote and it's your voice. And a lot of times people walk up to me and says, uh, are you the mayor? I said, you didn't vote. You know, I'm pretty blunt about that because it's dear to my heart about this. That when people don't vote, you don't have a voice. Okay? You know, there's countries out there that people get killed waiting in line to vote. And here, you don't have that problem. You don't have that issue. So shame on those that don't vote and thank you very much for those that do vote.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and uh we can move into the city staff.
Okay, it's yours.
So the first one will be our tourism, uh, quarterly report by the director of tourism.
Hello, council. Nice to see you again. It's been a little while since my last quarterly report. I'll briefly go over a few highlights of activities in the last few months. So first slide, please. First one, I wanted to acknowledge some media placements that we got that I'm very, very happy with. Uh, the Texas Highways April issue had a cover story about McDonald Observatory, which was great. And but that is not where our regional coverage stopped because Alpine got a uh a page and a half feature just on visiting Alpine, which I estimate about fifteen thousand dollars it would have cost us to buy that display ad space, which even then is much less valued than editorial, where people are actually, that's why they have the magazines, read the articles. So uh thrilled to see that. Uh, and for even more, uh yeah, I should mention that Texas Highways has a hundred and seventy-five thousand copies in circulation. Uh, but we also were in the April, May, June issue of Triple A Texas Explorer, which has one million, two hundred and fifty thousand circulation. And they did a feature on our downtown murals. And that I would estimate uh, we would have had to pay forty thousand dollars to get that amount of print real estate in that magazine. So that was wonderful. Uh, two things I didn't put in the packet. A uh, a Corpus Christi magazine did a feature on visiting Alpine and uh, and West Texas and asked me for photographs, which I shared and we got one on the cover, which was great. Uh, that was one of our contest photos. Uh, we also, every year, the Texas Association of Convention and Visitors bureaus works with Texas Municipal League for a tourism issue of Texas Town and City Magazine. And so I've been submitting concepts each time that comes around and both times last two years they've been accepted. So that we had a article that I wrote about our photo contest that was printed in that magazine. So we're pleased to have that happen. Uh, next slide. A lot of uh my activity is supporting events with their planning, administering the hotel occupancy tax grants. So one of the ways we have done this, we resumed after the long break for the last couple of years, uh, meeting in person. We resumed uh our event scheduling sessions. So twice a year, I try to invite everyone that I know of in the region who plans events to come to the Holland Hotel and we put up big, twelve big calendars for the next year. And everybody writes down the dates of their events and then I share those back to all of those people. Uh, and anyone who comes to me interested in starting a new event so that we can see at a glance what's already scheduled. We can see where the uh things are maybe conflicting, too many events in a short time period. We also see where the opportunities are. So we did that. We also, oh, about a month ago, did an events promotion workshop. Uh, a couple of our uh grant recipients for our hotel occupancy tax for events were our first-time uh event planners. So uh, so we did a workshop for them going over some of the basics of, you know, how to get the word out, what kind of advertising vehicles and press release, you know, P R vehicles that there are. Uh, we also made that available on YouTube. And so folks who are looking to apply for our grants or people who are just interested in having an event can find that information on the city's website now for uh forever, as long as there's a city website. Um, upcoming, and I absolutely want you all to know about it, also the public. And I'll be telling all of our event organizers and potential grant applicants, on May twenty-fifth, we'll be having a workshop about the hotel occupancy tax. And one of the uh benefits of our membership with the Texas Hotel Lodging Association is that we can uh request that they come out and give us information. So their lead counsel, Justin Bragel, is going to go and he and I will give a presentation on the legal uses of the tax. You may not know that T H L A is the entity that largely, they're the lobbyists for that industry. And so the tax kinda comes, that that law is largely drafted by them, working with the legislature. So this is kind of the horse's mouth on what, how this stuff is supposed to work. So we're really glad to have Justin coming. That will also correspond with our application window for grants this year, which is gonna be May twenty-third through July first. Uh, we're, thanks to Megan's proactive, we need to schedule this. We have a a longer window than we have some years. Sometimes we get behind the ball and uh, and it gets compressed. So there's a good five-week uh window for people to get applications in and I'll be promoting it uh starting very soon so that folks know that they can apply. Uh, next slide. Alpine is a destination in itself, but we gotta admit it's a small one in the middle of an amazing multifaceted destination. And so a lot of what we do is work with our neighbors and our partners uh to uh help each other get the word out. And so uh, we're blessed with really great neighbors and partners that have been very willing to work with me and we've built some great relationships over the last few years. Uh, Martha Fort Davis and Alpine uh have been doing some print and digital advertorials that I'll show you one of. Uh, we also worked with the state to get some free digital ads I'll tell you about. Uh, but let's go ahead and I'll step through them. Go, go and go to the next slide. Uh, this is a sample of an advertorial that Alpine, Martha and Fort Davis recently did. We uh, in the print magazine, I've shown you these before, but we, we shaped these things to feel like, you know, small feature stories in the magazine. So people pick up a magazine to browse through and read stories. So we, instead of just an ad, we give them a story to read about our area. And uh, so we commissioned the story, we do the layout, collect photography from uh, from all the partners. Uh, this year, we really are focusing on Texas Monthly and as Megan said, we're doing a uh hybrid where we do a print page in the magazine, but they also have an online travel guide that we're combining. And so the same article is also on the magazine website promoting. Uh, and then there's a series of digital ads and send people to that page. Uh, there's also a new publication in uh St. Angelo that we uh that we did this. that we did this similar advertorial in. So that's, that's the model that we're doing right now with those partnerships. The Travel Texas Economic Development Administration, I believe, co-op. Uh, this was a huge grant that the state of Texas wrote. And then they, they received it. And so millions and millions of dollars of, uh, of advertisements are funded by the federal government. And then there was a window where we could sign up for them. So go and go to the next slide, Geo, thanks. And so there was a suite of different, uh, different kinds of ads. There are social media stories, uh, online videos, mobile banners in mobile apps, custom content on a culture map website, just a series of, uh, of travel websites, a custom article in, uh, on Lonely Planet's website and Expedia Texas Destination Hub, they call it. So all of these things we signed up for. We, uh, we got approved, I generated the, uh, the materials for them. And, uh, Megan signed the contract that says, yes, we agree not to pay you a thing, uh, to run these ads. And, uh, and so those should be, uh, should be going out pretty soon. There's a, a little bit more materials. I'm going to get to them for one of those pieces. But I was thrilled to get as much as we did, really. This would, this would be a good fifteen, twenty percent maybe of our advertising budget that we're getting for, for free. Uh, so, uh, next slide. When with any kind of activity, you always want to measure your success. One of the questions at the start is, well, what does success look like? How do you know that you've done a good job? And in our case, it really kind of comes at the end of the year. And when we look back and say, well, how much hotel occupancy tax did we bring in? But through the year, it's incredibly difficult to know how we're doing. Uh, we can see on the street when folks are walking around and we hear sometimes from the hotels, but it's very difficult to systematically get information. And so Martha and Alpine have partnered on what's called a visitor dashboard. Uh, we went with a company called Zartico. And, uh, the way this works is it's GPS data from mobile phones, basically from mobile phones, iPads, from those kind of devices. It's anonymized, so privacy is protected. But they also connect it with credit card data from those devices, also anonymized. So we don't know who these people are, but we know where they're coming from. We know where they are in our area. One of the nice things about this package is it covers the entire tri-county area. So we can see, uh, a sample, it's not a hundred percent of the people in the world, but their network is one point six billion devices. So it's, it's one of the biggest networks we were able to find. Uh, and so we're going to see how long folks stay, how they move around our area. Particularly, we, it was really important, both Martha and Alpine, to have the whole tri-county area. So we can see who's going to the National Park, how long are they staying? And what neighboring communities are they, are they visiting? Are they spending the night? All those kind of questions. And one thing that's huge for me, since, uh, I'm working with the Hotel Occupancy Tax Grants Committee, we've never had really good information to give that committee about how the events went. We, we ask for a report from the events. Most of them give us one, but not all. Uh, but it's not a punitive committee. They're looking to help the event. So they don't tend to ding people too much. But this year and in future years, this one nice thing, we get three years of past data, uh, out of the box. And so we should be able, this year, when the Hooked to Occupancy Tax Grants Committee meets, especially for our long time annual events, to give them three years of visitor data for those dates. And we'll be able to tell four or five days after the fact, like I should, by Friday, I should be able to look and see how last weekend went. Uh, and so I'm really. Yes, it's a, and we can, if there's particular information the council wants to see in these reports, we can generate, uh, we can generate reports from it on an ongoing basis. So, uh, we're having our kickoff meeting tomorrow. Yeah, it's been a long time coming. We vetted, went through months and months of demos with different vendors, uh, looking at the different systems. So we're finally, finally there. And so, uh, then lastly, uh, regional partners that aren't destination, other destination organizations. I joined the Board of Directors of the Texas Mountain Trail Region, representing Alpine for Tourism. Uh, if you guys don't know what that is, it's a, it's a state Texas Historical Commission, uh, group. They represent, uh, six or eight counties. It goes from about El Paso to, uh, to our tri-county area and includes Culberson, Huntsmith. Uh, and it's history based. It used to be a tech stop program. So you'll see those, uh, Fort Trail, Mountain Trail, those signs on the highways. It was always a tourism based program, but now it's, it's a heritage tourism. So it's specifically history focused. So that's just another way that, uh, I can work with our other partners. There's folks from El Paso, Martha, Fort Davis, uh, looking for representation from Presidio on the board. But that's a really good group that I'm happy to be working with. Uh, I've been talking some with Big Ben National Park, who, in terms of tourism, they're our most important partner by far. You know, that is the, that is the thing that has put our area on the map for visitation. That's why so many people who live in Alpine know about the region. They came out, visited the park, fell in love with the area. And so, uh, one of the things I've been speaking to the National Park and Superintendent Criminaker is here to talk to you guys about the initiative to designate the undeveloped portions of the park as wilderness. Uh, and I personally am thrilled to work with the park staff as our partners. And, uh, and would really encourage you guys to, uh, to support their efforts here. They're, uh, the reason that people come out here is because of our open spaces, because of that remoteness. And so this is really intended to, uh, to keep it that way. So. And then lastly, uh, I'm a member of the Greater Big Ben Dark Sky Working Group, which was the group, uh, working on the International Dark Sky Reserve, which, as you all would know, was achieved with that designation happened. We're, it's amazing, we're the largest one in the world, uh, International Dark Sky Reserve. And, uh, we're working really closely with McDonald Observatory. Again, Martha, Fort Davis and Alpine will be having a meeting in a couple of weeks with them about messaging signage, branding, things like that around, uh, around the reserve. And so, uh, last slide would be, uh, about the parks. Uh, there's two things I'd like to present to you for consideration. I'll be speaking to the, to the parks board about this as well. I have talked to, uh, Chief LaSoya about the public safety issues here. But, uh, given the International Dark Sky Reserve, one thing I would really love would be to uh, communicate the importance of this to the city of Alpine by designating a dark, a night sky park, which obviously mo, all of our parks are closed after dark. So this would have to, we'd have to work out, you know, the procedures for that. Uh, Laura Gold, who I believe is here, has done a lot of work with measuring the night sky, uh, inventorying, lighting, all those kind of things. But she and I took a tour of our city parks to see, well, what would work? You know, what actually gives you a good experience of the night sky? And the one that was hands down the best was actually Nopalitos Park, which is across the creek from the jail. It's just that one little lot at the curve of Seventh Street. And I know as you guys are looking at, you're assessing parks and, uh, the property, you know, implications of what needs to be a park, what doesn't. Let me just, uh, maybe put a little note in the margin there as you're looking at that. That's something I would, I would love. I think we could, uh, get a lot of promotional benefit from that and maybe some educational, uh, materials and promote the reserve at that, at that little location. Uh, because that's one place we wouldn't need to affect any of existing lights. We wouldn't have to, uh, change any streetlights or anything like that to give a pretty good look at the night sky there. And, uh, lastly, this came up several months ago. Unfortunately, I couldn't make that meeting and so the discussion, uh, it got tabled, it kind of didn't go. Questions about why it was brought up. But the idea of comments for events to have alcohol at some city parks. I would say specifically coconut, we, the primary one possibly mains. But what I would, uh, ask from a tourism perspective would be a, a process whereby an event could request a permit to vend or distribute alcohol to adults for a specific event. Uh, and it could even be one that's specifically tourism based. So I don't see why I would absolutely need to. It could be a community event, but from a tourism perspective, uh, specifically music events and things like that. Uh, they're going to be a lot more successful if we could have a concession like that. And it would make our city infrastructure more available, more able to leverage for this kind of, uh, economic development activity for tourism. So I would ask you guys to consider that possibility of, uh, of allowing a permitting process. So somebody could apply to, for their event to have a vendor for, uh, and that's, uh, that's everything I have right now. Anybody have any questions at all? Thank you. Well, I, and, uh, to make sure you all, you all know, every month I do give a, like, embarrassingly comprehensive report to Megan. It's pretty long. If you ever got, if you ever want to see it, if anyone in the public ever wants to read in more detail what we're working on, uh, just ask.
I even get a weekly one. Thanks.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you, Chris.
Chris. Oh, wait, wait a second. Could I, could I ask Chris something real quick? Where's Nopalitos Park?
Nopalitos Park is, uh, uh, Seventh Street.
Okay, I know where it is.
Yeah, it curves, you know, it ends and so it curves right across from the jail.
By the creek.
Yep. So there's, there's two homes there that we'll want to talk to and make sure that the residents are, are okay with the idea. But, uh, but yeah, it's, it's dark.
The next report is the utilities report, uh, from our Director of Public Utilities, Keith Seager.
I know, you're all thinking, what doom and gloom news do I have?
One day he'll have a positive.
First, I'd like to say, good evening, Mayor, City Council members, council, Megan, Geo, and everyone that attends here and online. I'd like to start with something positive tonight for you. Uh, I have some great news. Uh, wastewater operator Caitlin Hardy, who just joined us recently. Megan and I, we still work in the city of Abilene. Uh, she recently sat for wastewater B exam last week, as a matter of fact, and she passed on her first attempt. All right, we now have a big wastewater. Well, that brings us into compliance with TCQ, we sit in that regard. So.
Awesome.
Uh, congratulations to Ms. Caitlin. Uh, she did an excellent job and, uh, and we're very proud. Okay. Now I'm going to talk about some money. Talk about rate studies, as is the series, or as we call it in the industry, uh, rate analysis. It's important, it's crucial, any municipal utility. And failing to adequately set rates or to properly fund a utility results in our being unprepared for the future. It limits our capabilities and sets us up for failure. One aspect of a strong utility is ensuring reliable equipment is provided along with sufficient, well-trained staff to complete projects in a timely manner without breaking our budget. Currently, we must rearrange our workload priorities daily, sometimes more than once. As it is, you know, we can't field two different crews. If I could, I would. I have one who worked on just new taps, new installations, and one that worked on all the little fires that we're putting out every day. Unfortunately, I have to form a triage and make a decision. And the emergencies always take priority, whether it's a wastewater or a water leak or, and it, it hurts the city. And it's just because we don't have the staffing and we don't have the funds. Utilizing a third party entity, next slide please. To perform a rate analysis will give us the information needed to ensure that we position our city correctly for future use and needs. Not only should rates cover the real current cost of providing our services, but they almost must provide for future fund balances as we grow in the coming years. I think we can all agree that growth in the city of Alpine is what we all desire. And we need the infrastructure to bring that growth here. Is my sincere belief that we should have a rate analysis performed by an independent entity very soon so that we know where we stand in regards to municipal utilities. It'll allow you to make well-informed decisions of how we go about funding that in the future. It's not just what we're paying now, it's preparing ourselves for the future. Any well-rounded utility must plan and have funds for the future. And part of that is making sure that our employees stay here. Because you just can't take someone off the street and say, okay, you're now a water operator. You're now a wastewater operator, or even just a utility worker. It takes time to learn that process. Takes time to learn what you're looking for when you're down to hole digging. Once we train those people, we need to maintain them. We need to train them, keep them. And as Megan said, keep them satisfied, keep them here. And it takes money to do that. And we're not paying them enough. Next slide please. Okay. Here's a, a big issue that I understand has been discussed before. But this one's really hurting us. This is the extraterritorial jurisdiction, or as we commonly call it, the ETJ. All around the perimeter of the city of Alpine is a buffer zone known as the ETJ, which stands for the extraterritorial jurisdiction. And in this zone, we have allowed certain individuals and entities to receive certain city services, water, et cetera. However, these places are not within the city limits. We technically have no legal authority over them. City regulations that protect things like building codes or development, they're not held to. This creates a problem for our utilities infrastructure as we have no authority to implement protections for our systems. This particular photo here, or set of photos, is just one example. The property owner, uh, Sonny Glenn, built this garage over one of our mains and it developed a leak. Now, I would have liked to taken a bulldozer and moved it right off there so we could get to it. But as you see, my crew had to dig with picks and axe and shovels. And you see how deep they are under that to find that main leak and repair it by hand. This creates real problems for us. What I'm suggesting. What's that?
We should have easements on some of those lines.
That's well and good. That's, that's like having a restraining order against a crazy guy. The point is, you, you, you can have an easement, but if they, we don't have the legal authority to go out there and, and inspect and, and make our ordinances be held to what the citizens build, we can't do anything about it. So what I'm suggesting is that the city council and city manager perhaps work with the county government to create an inter-local agreement where the anyone within the ETJ who requests city services, that the citizens of Alpine pay for and, and, and protect. All they have, all I'm asking is that they have to go by city of Alpine ordinances. They follow our regulations and that also gives our inspectors a chance to make sure things are done correctly. Because let's be honest here, most of this property, we're going to annex in the coming years as we grow. These, this is the area immediately next to our scene. And if we don't make sure things are done correctly there, we don't make sure our infrastructure is protected. We're going to inherit a white elephant. You know, we're going to inherit these problems. And I think it behooves the city to, to look into that. Next slide please. And I'm not picking on anybody here, I'm just pointing out something. Here we have a situation where one structure of this entity is in city limits, but the rest of it, next of it, isn't. I mean, the line, you know, it's, so, and again, we know in the incoming, that these areas are going to be annexed to the city more than likely. So again, just another instance where we need to have the protection to maintain our ordinances and make sure the future owners of these properties are protected by inspections and ordinance. Next slide please. Um, then just another slide to point out that behind the hotel where they're building casitas is not city property. So they don't have city ordinances, don't have inspections. So it's not, you know, I'm not picking on anybody here, I'm just saying, this is why we need this agreement going forward so that we protect the city of Alpine.
How do these businesses get into this ETJ?
Well, ETJ is, they're just there. That's the, the area of the buffer zone around the city. And in the years past, some, whoever drew the city lines, you know, they didn't have a straight pin. So, you know, you get a lot of.
The hotel was actually annexed by city council when it was.
So basically, there's no application process or anything for them to.
Extraterritorial jurisdictions, one and a half mile out from the city limits.
And that's set by the state.
Okay.
But in this case, the property, one part was annexed, but none of the rest. So it's.
All the red is annexed and the greens don't?
The green is not, and where the restaurant is located is not.
But they didn't.
I don't believe so. Kind of, we annexed one section but didn't take into consideration anything.
And that's, and that's what I'm just trying to point out to you. Like I said, I'm not picking on anybody here. We'd like these businesses. We want them here. But going forward, this is what we really need to do to protect ourselves, protect our infrastructure, because we're going to annex it in the future. The city's going to grow, and it's going to be part of the city of Alpine. So we should be able to, to know in advance that we have done due diligence and protected the citizens of Alpine. That when we take these properties in, the next person that buys it, you know, it's going to be, it'll be done correctly.
The main thing under state law that applies to extraterritorial jurisdiction is one city cannot annex property that's in another city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. So in suburban areas, it kept cities from trying to poach another city's land. And so it sort of protected the ETJ to be, that goes with the city that has that ETJ. For that city to use in the future if they wanted to annex it or expand the city limits.
I'm sure that we don't have anybody trying to poach anybody from our ETJ. Again, and this is talking about future growth of the city. Here's another location, ETJ, where there's a potential site for another store coming in, and they want services. You know, we're just, Alpine is growing, but we need to make sure that these businesses and these, these buildings are built according to code. Our infrastructure is protected. People don't build over our mains. Next slide, please.
That's, that's county? Yes. Right behind Alpine Auto is county, it's county proper, county jurisdiction. And then right over, it goes back into the city.
Back into the city.
Yeah, the next slide, if you, if you look at the next slide, I'll show you specifically. The green outline is the property in question.
Right.
Where they, as you see, the city goes up and then jogs up and around and.
Because the apartments are city.
So again, I'm just saying, this just proves more and more why we need this agreement so that, you know, and we're not asking the county for a lot. We're just saying, look, anybody that, in our ETJ that wants services and more than likely will be annexed in the future, that they apply and run according to city of Alpine ordinances.
It's also a health and safety issue. If you're not regulating the permitting and the building itself, you can have structures that are built, but ideally the electric, the electrical system may be faulty and it starts a fire, that building goes down, and then the properties within it go down as well. So it's really just who's going to regulate to ensure the safety for the community. And then you also have drainage. Who's going to put the road in? Who's going to maintain the road? You want to ensure that if it's something the county's supposed to do or the city's supposed to do, that it's done properly.
Next slide, please, Mr. Gio. Here's the same property, but also showing the, the blue squares behind it. These are requests for services for these five lots that are not in the city, and there's no infrastructure there to accommodate them. Again, as we go forward, we need to plan how our community is going to grow. A lot of, some of the areas of our city, when it's been done piecemeal before, they never planned to put mains down certain roads. I have several organizations right now wanting services, as Megan mentioned earlier, that I can't currently supply them with the infrastructure I have, and if they want it to, for their purposes, it's going to cost them. The city can't afford to put new mains in and build them. So the customers, it's, it's considerable amount of money, and they're not, they're frustrated, and I understand it, but you know, I just, I have no other alternative but to say, if you want this, then you're going to have to pay for it, because the citizens can't afford it. So again, it's not just businesses, it's homes as well that want to go in. We just don't have the infrastructure. We don't have the protection. And next slide, please. Here again, on the other side of town is mostly loot outside of city limits, people who are wanting services, but we don't have any wastewater mains going down there at all. So these are areas that we're going to expand to in the future. So it behooves us to get ahead of this and start planning and, and protect our infrastructure so that we can, so when we do put the mains in, we're protected. We have a way to save them, keep them from being harmed. Next slide, please. Current businesses are growing. Tech dot right now is in an expansion project, and they want even larger water meter, so more demand on the system. You know, it's not just new process. It's current companies that are growing as well. Next slide, please. Another one. AEP is looking to purchase this property behind the federal courthouse, and they want services for a 50,000 square foot service center. It's going to be a challenge. And again, it's not in the city limits. Next slide, please. Gives you a better view of what the property they're looking at. The green rectangle is the one in particular. This particular case, while it may be part of the city, we have no infrastructure there. So there's just a lot to consider going forward, and we need to, to plan. Next slide, please. Part of the rate analysis I mentioned earlier is, and Megan alluded to, that we're just so busy running emergencies. These guys are running hard. They're tired, and they're trying to make do with what they have. And I mentioned, I don't have enough equipment for my two crews. If I had two backhoes, I could have one crew dedicated to new installations and supplies, and I had one dedicated to fixing leaks and mains, but I don't, at least not now. So hopefully, we can find a way to do that, and we can reward these folks for their hard effort and all the hard work that they do. Next slide, please. Last, but certainly not least, Earth Day celebration 2022, I believe, was a great success. A lot of people showed up there to park. It was a good time. Kids had a ball. Counselor Stokes had a contest that was quite well received, especially the little lady that won the first prize. She was probably excited to get that. But I want to especially thank Ms. Adelina Biel for her enthusiastic approach to this. As you know, she has a passion for this stuff, and she did a great job helping bring all this together in a grand fashion. I'd also like to thank Jessica Boers and Priscilla Lopez for their help that evening, running games and, and the painting. And I especially want to thank Jessica Washington, my administrative assistant, all of her hard work creating the posters that I used, finding the items, the handouts, teaching the proper way of disposing of items in a wastewater system, not only for the little kids, but the big kids, because they all seem to like little silicone toys that we had that shaped, you know, well, never mind what they were shaped in, but anyway. Y'all were there, you know what they were, and they loved them. Everybody was talking about it, so. But again, I'll leave it to Ms. Adelina to expand it more when she does her report to you. And, but I appreciate all the hard effort of everyone there, and I, it was a great success, and, and I think it'll be better next year. And I thank you for your time and all the questions. That's all I have for you unless you have questions for me.
This is a backhoe run.
Well, in the CIP, I was originally budgeted for around 80,000. But I'm, I'm going to, the last time I priced one a year ago in Florida, they were creeping up to close to 90. So the one we have is, is older, and you know, we, we do our best to keep it running in a good shape. The one at the wastewater plant is on its last legs, but it doesn't have to travel down the road and go very far. So it will make do, but at least I would have two backhoes to put on the road. One to work on installations and, and maintenance, and the other one takes, you know, the emergencies, all the leaks and things that are popping up, so. And I promised Megan last week I'd get to the Sunshine House on her leak, and I couldn't do it. I just had a situation come up with a main wastewater main, and it just has to take priority. I've got to get that business up and running. There's a tough decisions, and it, and it disheartens the crew because they feel like they're taking one step forward and three steps back. And they've got a lot of heart. They care about this city. They care about the citizens. Need some help. Anyway, I thank you.
The next report is from the airport. Airport supervisor, Abilene.
Mayor, Council. With our current project is a crack to coat and striking for the 119 statements. You can see the before and after picture, and actually, it looks a little cleaner today. So our project was completed, but it won't be finalized since we were part of a group when this was done with Ozona and Marfa, which, which is okay, because the warranty doesn't start till the project is actually finalized. So, so we're done with our, our part, and so is Martha. They're just waiting on Ozona because I think weather held them back, so. But we're good with that. So there's, there's no, and we have a lighting project that's coming up soon. It's going to be going to commission in June, and they won't advertise till July, so they're hoping construction will begin in August or September, unless it gets pushed up. He called me today. The guy called me today, Chris, and he said, he had to talk to me about something, so hopefully it's not to move it further down. We'll find out about that. We also had the, our taxiway, which you had given Megan wanted her to negotiate the price with Kate. I, I don't know where that's. Well, I mean, with Jared, I'm sorry, near Kate's hangar, but I don't know where we are.
Jared and I discussed moving it from where we end to the end of the last hangar on the right, which allows for expansion, which is one reason why funding can cover it. And we cannot do the full taxi lay. Unfortunately, the cost of material is going up every day, and I am waiting for Jared to come back with final numbers, but he's going to keep it under 60,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're getting two, two out of that hangar.
It would be straight down. It won't have the, the side or the other side. This will at least get two of the hangers accessible to a taxi.
Access to.
Plus an added one that should.
Yeah, plus an extend, extended area so we can expand further out. This is the CBP helipad that they've been working on for, I think, over two years, two and a half years. Finally got it in. Yes, that's the government one. Yes, it started out as, I think they said 30,000, ended up going to like 200,000. By the time they're done, and they're actually taking care of all this. So the lights are working. It's just needing to be cured. I think the, the next week, they're going to be putting the markings on there.
Are they the only ones that can use it?
Yes, they will.
So they have a lease, so they lease that property specifically for their helipad. So they pay us a monthly fee for it.
So we'll put a no parking on there. We'll, we'll do that. We'll be. And the next slide is the transient traffic for January, February, March, and April. January, usually hunters coming in. Picks up a lot. March, we actually saw an increase for people. Spring break, travelers going down south to the park, which a lot of them were first timers, you know, and been here. We just heard about it. We're just going to go take a ride down there and stay for a while. They come from all over, so I couldn't even tell you, you know, this is just from what I got speaking to them, you know. They said they had heard about the park, and I explained to them McDonald Observatory, and they said, can't get in because they have to get in the start party. You have to request it for, and they're booked up also, so. But yeah, a lot of visitors were going down south, and we continued till April also. And then we had a little transient seagull that stopped by in January for a bite to eat. Threw him some candy. I threw him some candy, and he was on his way. Next, we have the fuel sales and gallons for jet, jet fuel and avgas. As you can see, the jet is our popular seller, you know, which is good. The price did go up. I think we're at six, over $6 now, so. But when I ask pilots, you know, they're not, they're not too scared of it, or they don't seem too frightened by it. They're like, that's what it is. In the area, yes, and a lot of them. And the next one would be the gallon sold since October for this year. You can see it kind of just goes up and down, fluctuates. Nothing too bad. I have to, I think we weren't, we weren't keeping records of it previous year, so later on, I think I could add, you know, 2021 or 22, 21, 20, 21, 22, 23. And our last picture, I included this one because the dog was actually adopted from the animal shelter. So they decided to get charter a plane and come down here and pick it up. So three, three people came out of the plane besides the pilots. Yeah, so I was, and I mean, this thing's over 100 feet long, you know. Well, I was, I was going to get myself. But we probably end up with serial killers. That's a simple porto.
And they provide treats for the dog.
Yeah. I don't think he knows how lucky dog he is. I wanted to go with him. I said, can I?
Okay, we're going to move on to public hearings. Public hearings obtained citizens' views or comments regarding the second and final reading of ordinance 2022 dash oh four dash oh one, and ordinance repeating ordinance 2017 dash oh five oh two, removing the no parking on Soul Ross Avenue and H Street. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead. Move then. We'll go to consent agenda. Minister Financial Reports, Department Written Reports, Board Appointments, et cetera. Notice to the public, the following items are of a routine and administrative nature. The council has been provided, the first with background supporting information material on each item and/or has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately, unless requested by council member, in which event the item or items will immediately be withdrawn for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the items stop requiring separate discussion and have been acted upon. The remaining items will be adopted by one vote, City Secretary.
Tonight's consent agenda has six items. First one, approval of April 19th, regular meeting minutes. Second, approval of April 26th, special meeting minutes. Third, approval of excused absence of Council Rodriguez from April 19th, 2022, regular city council meeting. Fourth, approval of excused absence of Councilor Sandate from April 19th, 2022, regular city council meeting. Five, approval of the appointment of Amy Hardy to the music advisory board under the music venue position. Six, approval of gas department job descriptions, including gas service worker one, gas service worker two, gas service worker three, and gas construction partner.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Okay, is there a second? Okay, motion has been made. Second discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, black sign, motion carries unanimously. Okay, so we'll move on to information or discussion items. City manager.
We have a presentation tonight by Baytown National Park Superintendent Bob Kremaker about the proposal for official wilderness designation of the currently under the parts of the park.
Thank you so much. Little change of pace here. No slides. We can leave the lights on. Thank you to Megan. Thank you to the mayor. Thank you to the city council. Thank you to Chris Rudge for allowing us the time on this, on the agenda here. I would also like to ask your permission to invite Raymond Skiles, Alpine resident, to join me in this presentation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So Raymond, why don't you start? So Raymond, why don't you start?
Thank you. Bob will be back to to fill in lots of blanks here, but let me just introduce. Myself and this project. Raymond Skiles, I was actually born in Alpine, but spent the last thirty years working for Big Ben National Park. As a biologist and I am here representing a citizens group. This is why there is some separation between the official, you know, park National Park Service Agency and folks that are not, you know, employees. Even though I retired, this group are are National Park Specialists, so you might say, several retirees. The Big Ben Conservancy, the National Parks. Conservation Association, you know, folks that are kind of nerds about national parks. And and we are proposing that Big Ben National Park be. Included in the National Wilderness Preservation System. And you may never have heard of that before in your life, or you may have been at places throughout, you know, the other parts of the country that. That they are important destinations for for people who like, you know, outdoor activity, open space, wild country. And let me first say that. A little little background on this this act, you know, why might it be something that could be abused to Big Ben National Park? Good question there. President Johnson signed this act back in nineteen sixty four. And the recognition was that, you know, that there should be a place to preserve in perpetuity. The the open space, the undeveloped lands that that are are public lands include. Now, to be really clear here, we're we're not suggesting any change in how things go with Big Ben. The all the developments that are there, the roads, the lodges, the gas stations, the employee housing, visitor centers. Those are important. Those are not part of this proposal. Those would all stay, all the activities and facilities. That are currently available would not change. What this would do is really make all the rest of that open space. Put it at its highest level for protection into the future. And it's important to recognize that there are sixty five national parks in the entire country. Fifty of those have wilderness designation that we're proposing, you know, the same same sort of the idea. And 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 you know, you might say, well, you know, doesn't the National Park Service do that already? I mean, isn't that their job? And it's a good point that that the the national parks are high levels of protection. But there there is still. You know, it's possible that that a lot more development could be done, you know, new roads bulldozed in or. Developments and lodges put in places that haven't been in the past. We're saying that what we have is important. It gives access to the visitors, but let's say that that it's. That these wild areas are why people love the park. And 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 let's go ahead and make it official, not just the sort of that's what the park does, right? But say that's what the law says, well, we'll we'll preserve those areas. That we've enjoyed for so long for our children and grandchildren and beyond. So let me say that we wouldn't be proposing this if the National Park Service weren't, you know, a partner in it. A key ingredient. And 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 willing to say, yes, you know, we think it's a good idea to. This requires federal legislation. So we have been in contact with our Congressman Gonzalez's office. And and their important concept was, you know, and we agreed that this, this is not a political issue. Whether you're Democrat or Republican, every administration since the act was passed. Where the president was was Democrat or Republican have have signed these into into place. If the the key ingredient is does the community and the local entities. That appreciate the park, that depend on the park for tourism and their economies. Do they think it's okay, a good idea? Do they support it? And that's why we're going out to lots of organizations, businesses, individuals and and trying to engage. Try to help people understand and and we do like it when we have entities that sign on as supporters. Tonight, we're not asking for that. We're actually here to 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 talk and discuss. If you all care to become supporters, of course, we would love that. But that'll be another question, you know, that that you all address if you choose at a later meeting. So so let me slow down. And Bob will will give you the MPS perspective.
Thank you, Raymond. Visitation to our area is going up really fast. That's not news to anyone in the room. The park saw five hundred eighty eight thousand visitors last year. And so one question that people may ask is, how are you gonna accommodate all the visitors in the future? I wish I had the answer to that, but I can tell you that building more facilities is not the answer to that. You know, any of you who've been in cities that just keep building more and more roads know that, you know, within two or three or five years. The road fills up at the same level it was before. Infrastructure, ironically enough, attracts more people and you never get rid of those crowds. So we will have to be figuring out how to deal with with higher levels of visitation in it's in the future as we already are now. I will say, one of the benefits of. The park drawing essentially or the Congress drawing development lines around the places that are developed. Is that this will ensure that the economic benefit of those additional tourists will go to the gateway communities. Turlingua, Marathon, Alpine, of course, and we've heard several people already say that that the park is essentially the reason why at least many of the people come to this area's tourists. The last time that we did any analysis was twenty nineteen. That was the last normal year that we had. Let's hope we get back to that. The estimate was that the economic value of the park to the surrounding area was over forty five million dollars and over six hundred jobs. Created. So there are many, many studies that have been done in other areas around the United States where wilderness has been designated. And they uniformly find that this is good for the local economy. There are people that in addition to being National Park nerds, as Raymond said, are wilderness nerds. Hiking is still permitted. Horseback riding is still permitted. If we ever thought there was a need to build more trails or walking campsites. All that would be permitted within the wilderness area. So one of the. Key things is the Park Service went through this analysis forty four years ago. We we published a study and in fact, it was. Went from the park through a big public involvement, environmental impact statement, went all the way up the chain. And a a recommendation was made signed by the president to the Congress. They please, we would like you to to do this bill. It didn't happen and in large part, that's because of the politics of the nineteen seventies. And there were a lot of contentious issues going on. Interestingly enough, Guadalupe Mountains National Park. A little to our west and north, they did see wilderness designation in nineteen seventy eight, so. Some of this is a personal pride. Do we want them to have the largest wilderness in the state of Texas? So but our policy, but not the law, and this is a critical distinction, is that when. The service identifies an area for potential wilderness designation, particularly when a recommendation is made. We are told that we are not to do anything to interfere with those values, so that we keep the prerogative of Congress there. So people may ask, if it's not broken, why do you need to fix it? And I will point out that that is policy, that's not law. And twice in my career, I have seen administrations either change those policies in in fairly significant ways. Or plan or attempt to and 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 never finish that thing. New people come into Washington, they often don't understand how it works and. For better or worse, sometimes their best intentions or worst intentions never get implemented. So I have no intention in my watch of developing any of these areas and, you know, I can't speak for future superintendents. But if you trust that every every future administration in Washington will be as supportive of. National parks as as we have seen of late, then you probably don't want to do this. But if you want to make sure that the the golden goose that that is what attracts everyone to this area. It would be my recommendation that that wilderness is a really good thing. And I think what's most important to to people around here is there's actually gonna be no change on the ground. It will essentially cement the handshake deal that we've got right now. And so every legal use that's going on in the park right now. On paved roads, on unpaved roads, hiking trails on the river, all that continues. So this is not about changing the park. It's about ensuring a certain future that people tell us that that's what they really want. So I will end there and Raymond and I would be delighted to ask, answer any of your questions. You should have in your packets, three documents. There's a fact sheet. There's a map and this is the nineteen seventy eight map. So officially, the National Park Service, since we did the study. A generation or two ago, and we did all the public involvement. This is our official recommendation. We stand by it. Everybody seems to think this map could be improved. And so we are behind the scenes remapping the park to identify, not a new recommendation, because that would require public involvement. But essentially to identify based on changes that may or may not have occurred in the last forty four years. Which areas of the park are eligible for designation should Congress want to do that and and should Congressman Gonzalez. Ask, we can provide that information. The third thing in your packet is a very recent article from Texas. And there's been a lot of good media attention of late, Texas Monthly, Texas Highways, Market Public Radio. And and we expect more. Two minutes ago, I would stop talking.
Thank you for that. There are not enough public lands in the state of Texas. Everything's privately owned. And of course, the city and the county of Brewster depend on that park for our tourism. Tourism equates to monies.
Yes, sir.
So I think it's crucial now, hopefully, that the council and the future mayor will support this endeavor. I think it's very important for our area to keep that park alive and and sustainable.
I I appreciate those sentiments, sir, and and let me just say, this is the first time I have appeared before this council. It's only a hundred miles from here in Panther Junction. This is where I go to grocery shops. So I want to be sure you understand the park has strong interest in being good neighbors with the city. You are our our big gateway community, even if it's a hundred miles. If you live in West Texas, what's.
And I would like to just take an opportunity to 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 really express that it's great to be here with the city of Alpine. In large part because it was the outstanding individuals in Alpine that really caused the park to come into existence. Some of you that have been around a while or whatever names, Casner, Frank Oy, Berkeley, Fourchimer. And of course, E. Thompson, you know, all Alpine folks. And so, you know, it it just separate from this issue, I think it's really important to to just point that out and say that. Alpine really is the genesis of Big Ben National Park, so. Appreciate the history of this place.
Well, thank you all for being here this evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Okay. See, manager.
Actually, the next one goes to Mr. Johnson. It's a little update on the Richard County Central appraisal district board.
Okay.
I don't know how much I really have to update, but this is my second go round for serving on the, what we call the. And I served off and on for about fifteen years on the ARV, which is appraisal review board. If you've ever had a problem with your appraised property, you probably know more about the ARV than you do about CAD. Because it's the workaholic, so to speak, of the central appraisal district. And I've done it for off and on a long time. But we do have four registered professional appraisals in our office, which is unusual for a county this size. To have that many appraisals. These are all men and women who have gone through workshops in Austin and have been designated. And certified as professionals. And I don't know if you all have received your mail, but on May the sixth, the new appraisal. Notices went out to all the taxpayers, I mean, to all the property owners. And in that letter is also a form that you can use to protest your appraised value. And you would go before the ARV and state your case and. We would obviously listen and make what arrangements we could and perhaps none. And the appraisals this year are going to take place on the twenty third and twenty fourth, which is a Thursday and Friday of June. And then on the twenty seventh and the twenty eighth, which is a Monday and a Tuesday in June. And it'll be in. What used to be the old post office, which is now the appraisal district. We have a conference room in the back. And that's where all the hearings are held and the chief appraiser Denise will be there. And she'll work with the appraisal review board to hear whatever your arguments may be about your appraised value. And just for your information, last year, the taxable value in Brewster County. Was three hundred and ninety two thousand ninety two million thirty one thousand seven hundred and fifty five dollars. And this year, before the appraisal hearings or protest hearings. Our appraised taxable value right now is four hundred and forty two million eight hundred and fifty four thousand and forty seven dollars. So our taxable value is going up over last year. But potentially it will come down, not significantly, but it will come down. One of the issues that the appraisal district uses now with all of these short term rentals that we have. They have had a difficult time, as we will have, in taxing them by income. Which is the way hotel properties are taxed. It's by income, not by appraised value. So what they've done is they are taxing them at what's referred to as cost. In other words, what it would cost to build that particular home or building. And that's really the only way that they have without being able to secure the income for a Airbnb. And that's the way we tax the holiday in Hampton and all the other properties here in Alpine and Brewster County. And that's about all I have unless y'all have, I know more about the ARV than I do about the CAD. The appraisal review board as opposed to the central appraisal district. And that is, we set the budget for the district, we. We make decisions like we make here about buying automobiles and trucks for the appraisers to go out in the field. One of the issues that we just highlight, we can't go behind a locked gate. So if we come on your property and you are a gated home or business, we have to kind of look through the fence. And make our best determinations as to whether or not we think it's as big as it is. And as a case, we had a lady when I was two years ago, when I was on the ARV. Who we did that and she wouldn't unlock her gate and we could not come on her property. So finally, during the ARV hearing, we convinced her to unlock her gate. And we went on and we appraised the property and her value went down. But you have to work with us as well as us working with y'all. Anyways, that's about it for me unless y'all have any questions.
Yeah, on your short term rentals. Do you have a comprehensive list of all of them?
As you do, yes. They're all subject, as Chris can tell you, to hot money. It depends on how much we can figure out they're actually taking in. But I know there is a hot, I mean, a short term rental. Website or something in Austin, or maybe it's with the comptroller's office that tracks all these. But you have to report the money before, even before we can collect our hot money.
Yeah, it's it's really tricky. In fact, the state, they came up with an agreement with Airbnb. That Airbnb gives them a payment automatically collect, but they don't have any transparency. They they they're not giving any information on individual properties as to what that income is. They just have to trust. And they can't audit it, so they just have to trust Airbnb that they're paying the right amount. So in this case, where we're at right now in Alpine is we have the permitting process that began the last couple of years. And Geo is maintaining and you guys see those permits as they come up. And so once those and then we look for unregistered ones because we have the ordinance in place. So so that's where we're we're still at at the moment is identifying them, getting them on the books. So that they are, they have that clear expectation of reporting. But it's very difficult to.
A lot of leakage or or getting trying to get around not paying. There's a company in Austin that specializes in auditing. Hot taxes, people paying hot taxes correctly. So they have the expertise of these talks about the difficult to figure the wilderness because. People have to pay the their tax to the controller for their state sales tax, separate from the hot taxes. So they figure out a way to start looking at that.
Yeah, and that's what I was gonna say, because I was saying I was saying in twenty seventeen and. I had a discussion with the folks concerning the the hot money and identifying the proposed property owners. And it said Airbnb comes and pays as a lump sum and that's all we know.
Yeah, and that may be an option if you guys decided that it was a, that the. Yeah, and that may be an option if you guys decided that it was, that the deal was worth it, you know, to to come into a voluntary agreement with Airbnb to get that automatically collected, then we'd get payment. Today, we've decided that, you know, we're gonna grassroots it, and we're gonna, we're gonna work it and see how, see how we go. We have not decided yet that it's worth investing in some of the services because, you know, there's a cost associated with those. And and it's a question whether we would recoup more unpaid taxes than the costs of those services. So at the moment, we're we're working the registration process, and then we'll take the next step in terms of those kind of collection and, you know, reminders and things like that. And then also, yeah, also notes to folks that we know are operating to invite them politely first on to register.
We're very polite.
Very polite.
I think we're doing, well, we are doing a lot better than I believe the county.
We need to do the good neighbor policy because no neighbor locks them. They'll turn.
The county is definitely struggling with with collecting, especially down south. I'm being a, you know, a community that's been established. You're right. People will say, I think they're a short-term rental, or, you know, they volunteer.
I don't watch.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Anything else, Jerry? Okay, let's move on to the action items. To be accommodated by brief saving effects, including where funds are coming from, if applicable. Excellent items are limited to ten per meeting. Councilman Stokes.
Through the second final reading of ordinance, twenty twenty-two dash oh four dash oh one ordinance, appealing ordinance, twenty seventeen dash oh five dash oh two, which would be to remove the no parking section on Saw Ross and Pay.
Okay, is there a motion? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's made. And second, any discussion?
Yes, I'm sorry, Judy, but I wasn't here last week. So can you kind of give me an update on what we're trying to accomplish here?
We're trying to make it where there's more parking down there for the leisure.
So it's the agent and city vehicles also.
Everybody parks there anyway.
So which one is it? Which one is this one?
One right there, that one little strip of city.
So we would only get two, maybe?
Two, maybe three.
Yeah, that's where you used to pay your bills and whatnot. That's why I had a no parking originally.
Did we do a traffic study or?
No, you don't. We didn't do it. No.
It can't be. It's not as long as this table.
Yeah.
The no parking area.
I'm just asking because wasn't it put in because of a really bad accident or something?
No, no, that that was, it's a long story, but it had nothing to do with it. Because I got very involved in that issue, but it had nothing to do with an accident. An accident happened on Fifth and Saw Ross.
And it in no way, Daryl, causes issues for your traffic with the officers and all that going through there?
More discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Hold the opposed like sign motion carries, and let's move on to the second item, City Manager.
Approved Resolution Twenty Twenty-two oh five dash oh one, a resolution accepting the Big Ben Conservation Alliance proposal to provide funding to A.E.P. to convert city of Alpine non-compliant municipal street lights to compliant seventy watt HBS flatlands, full cutoff, Cobra head fixtures.
Okay.
Hi, y'all. Can you put that down?
Hang on a second, please. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm so moved.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, now you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I appreciate y'all having us here tonight. Laura Gold is here with me.
Shelley Bernstein.
We're a, we're a team. We also have the Alpine Night Skies team. Everybody cheer. Yay. Okay, awesome. So I'm the Executive Director of the Big Ben Conservation Alliance. And last summer, when Bill Wren was working on the Dark Sky Reserve, we, B.B.C.A., held a fundraiser called Sirius Starlight, and we raised about forty-five thousand dollars to retrofit lights. One of the things that we knew with that reserve designation is that we were all going to get hit with the bill later. We were going to need to become compliant within now about four years. And that means that we're going to have to raise money to get lights that are out there compliant with dark skies. What we did when we started is we started to look at the various towns to say, what are the compliance levels as they exist now? Basically, what we found is that in Marfa, Balmeray, Valentine, Marathon, they were been ninety-five percent compliant at the municipal level. So we're not going to them. We're saving the money. We did see that Presidio was zero percent compliant, so we went to Presidio first. And we worked with city council, their city manager, and A.E.P. in a partnership to come up with a solution for the city that A.E.P. could provide. It took us about three or four months, and A.E.P. came back and said, we can provide you with these Cobra headlights. You see them up. They look like Cobra heads, full cutoff, which means they're fully shielded. And we had looked at LED to see if LED was something that could be provided, but A.E.P. can't provide LED at twenty-seven hundred Kelvin, which is what the ordinances require. They have LEDs on their shelves that are about four thousand, four hundred Kelvin, which lets off almost twice the light pollution as a twenty-seven hundred Kelvin fixture. And they are looking at things from a cost perspective themselves to just say, you know what, we can't stock the twenty-seven hundred LEDs at this, just the few that we need for the municipalities here when they're working across the state. They want to keep their inventories very very consistent across the entire state. So they said, we've got these Cobra heads. I made a call to Bill Wren. He said, we love those Cobra heads. They're the best. We went before city council and Presidio, and we said, we've got this money. We're happy to spend it here, and Presidio voted to replace all of their streetlights with these Cobra heads. And that is a project that's happening right now. G.I. turned around and said, what about Alpine? You have a great city secretary who is advocating on your behalf. And we sat down, and I said, I'm not sure. I don't know how much money I have left. But it turns out that we're, I think Presidio is going to take about half of the money that we raised. We have an incentive program running for residents to replace their lights. That's going to take another ten, fifteen thousand dollars. And then we've got at least ten to start here in Alpine. Alpine is sixty percent compliant. There are about a hundred and fifty streetlights that are not compliant that we could fix with this program. I don't have all of the money in hand now, but I have enough money to start. We just got another grant earlier this week from Permian Basin Area Foundation to help augment those funds. So we have a little bit more to work with. And then I have two grants out that I think are gonna, are gonna come in in a positive way. So I think we're gonna have the money. If you'd like us to do it, that would get you a hundred percent compliant in the city of Alpine at no cost. And I hope that's welcome news after your presentation, the workshop.
You don't say no to free money.
Yeah, well, so I just want to thank Laura Gold, who has been working constantly on getting residents signed up for the program, and and the city who have also been putting out amazingly positive messaging about getting these lights changed at no cost to residents. So thank y'all very much. Do you have any questions?
God, if it helps the city take care of their pollution, like pollution problem, and it's free, they will take it.
I hope so. I think it's such good news.
Yeah, it is. It's terrific news.
This is just the city, or does it include like Saw Ross?
Um, Saw Ross is mostly done because the observatory did a lot of that work. It it's only the city fixtures, and then the observatory is working on things like the hotels, the the installations that are a little bit more, they require more, a little bit more work because you have to go in and sort of figure out what kind of light they need. Because B.B.C.A. really doesn't have a lot of staff, what we did is partnered with A.E.P. to take care of everything on an A.E.P. poll. And then we hope to call Rio Grande Electric to do the same thing. And we can sort of manage that program for residents and for municipalities with very little, very little staff and very little output because it's just about coordinating a lot of paperwork and getting that to A.E.P. that then goes out and and does the installations. Thank you.
Maybe Laura could drive it around at night.
Laura has been driving around a lot.
And you've done a great job. You've done a great job here to say. You know, I mean, that's a great endeavor for the city.
We also had help from Gloria Skinner. She's a high school student that is, yeah. And she's been going out with Laura on the weekends to talk to residents. So we've had a lot of, we've had a lot of groundwork in town. But I I can't stress enough like how big of a deal it is to be supported by the city. We've seen that in Presidio as well, like the city council supported it, the city administration, the mayor supported it, and the residents are just, yeah, let's, let's do it. And that's not something, it's a, it's kind of a do-gooder project, I think. Because with the residents, what we give them is the light. And they save some money on their electricity bill. They don't have to pay a hundred and fifty dollars for the light. And they also get a fifty-dollar gift card to Porters to do the swap. That's right. So we just kind of went out there with the best offer that we could and just wanted to spend as much time as possible getting people to to change the lights without this tiered system of, well, today we're going to offer this or tomorrow we'll up it to that. We went right out of the gate with the best thing we had.
All we got to do is take care of Coconut Stadium. I know, and I've talked about it forever. And I mean, for twelve miles outside in any direction, you can see those lights lighting you. So anyway, thank you very much for addressing the council. Yeah, oh, yeah.
I want to thank.
It's better. Everybody.
I'm going to thank the council and the staff, particularly, who have super supported in this long-term effort.
Thank you.
Yeah, y'all do one heck of a job, so our clues to you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed like sign motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Okay, let's go to item three, City Manager.
Approved waiving annual payment in lieu of taxes fees owed by the Alpine Housing Authority until fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Okay, entertain a motion. Second.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
The Alpine Housing Authority, their director, Elba Torres, and some of the board members are here tonight. And the Alpine Housing Authority was actually established in connection with the city of Alpine. The mayor does appoint the board members for that entity. With some stipulations, a copy of the contract from, I believe, nineteen fifty-four is provided that outlines what the city responsibilities were, and then, of course, what the housing authority's responsibilities were. One of them is compensation. So instead of paying annual property taxes, it's considered a payment in lieu of taxes based on their, their income, how much they bring in, up to about ten percent. Their auditor did provide some financial information to show you that their income does not really fluctuate. It is pretty stable. They also utilize that to cover all of their operating expenses. We currently have three, three sites that that offer the the public housing assistance. In the past, the city has always waived it. We just want to get it back on record. As we go and we're cleaning up things and we're finding, okay, are we keeping on track of it? And the last time this was addressed was in two thousand eighteen. And so ideally, when we get audited or we look at our financials, this is an entity that has an outstanding payment to the city. I don't consider it an outstanding payment. I consider it as we need to make sure we stay on top of whether the city decides to waive or not. City staff is recommending that it be waived. This is an an agency that does provide a much-needed resource to the community. They aren't in it to make money. This is definitely not a profit organization. And they provide to to some of our less fortunate residents. I'm asking that the prior year is obviously be waived, and then I'd like to extend it out to fiscal year twenty twenty-five so that they have time and we have time to personally move forward with everything else going on in in our busy community, and then bring it back in twenty twenty-five to revisit again.
Yes, I would like to thank Megan for reaching out to us.
Could you please identify yourself?
Back on track.
Could you identify yourself? Your name is yourself and your word.
My name is Elba Torres, and I am the Executive Director of the Housing Authority. And I did bring two Board of Commissioners with me, Gilbert Boland Solera and Commissioner Jenny Lewis, for support as well. And I just want to let you all know we do have fifty units, fifteen, fifty apartment units that we manage, and we serve over a hundred families, family members in those units. And these are, you know, some of the most needed individuals. They don't have much income. And this is a way for us to provide safe housing for them as well. We don't make a lot of money. Like Megan said, we are really just barely getting by. Rod can tell you.
I've worked with with Elba and the board that have done a great job, really providing a good service to the board here in Elba.
Yeah, so we really do our best. And twenty-eight of those units are for the aged and disabled. Okay. So also want to just mention that the Alpine Housing Authority, one of our highest expenses is utilities. We do pay to the city of Alpine over forty-one thousand in water, so far, so far, okay? And twenty, over twenty-two thousand dollars in gas to the city. So we pay those out every month when we get our bill. And also want to just let you know, we've also had some big expenses this past few years. We had, for example, we had to replace a gas line, and that was over eighty-five thousand dollars that we had to put out for that. And during the freeze, we had two water pipes that broke. One was for sixty-five thousand, sixty-five hundred, and the other one was fifteen hundred, around there. So this money helps us continue with all of those projects, maintaining the units, buying appliances and equipment and maintaining the yards, and, you know, we just we just put all that money back into the organization. And it's not like we have a lot of money. So your consideration is greatly appreciated for all that. And right now, we do have three units that are offline, which means we can't rent them out because they need a lot of repairs. So we're going to need money to get those apartments back up and running so we can get revenue from those as well. Did you want to thank? So I do want to just thank you all.
And they do a fantastic job for our less fortunate folks in Alpine. Yes, I attend the meetings off and on and watch how they intermingled with one another. And it's it's fantastic just to watch what they do here. And I remember at the start of the gas lines, it was one heck of a project. But it was sorely needed leaks and whatnot. You know, it could have been potentially deadly. And y'all handle that down with ease and with certification of, I'm not that was certified in doing that job.
Yes.
So and those folks are a little warm, weren't they, this year?
Yeah, they are.
So any discussion? None? All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Thank you. Item four, Councilman Stokes.
Annual Performance Assessment and City Secretary, Plating and Pounds Compensation Adjustment.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Okay, sir, a second. Okay, motion's made. Discussion. Okay, emotions, my discussion.
I wanted to see this put on here because I think Geo took it over a year ago. And I just think he's done a great job. I think he's gone above and beyond and, you know, I think he deserves a little bit more money. We don't want him leaving.
Yeah, no, we don't.
We can replace you.
Yeah, it's a good thing. You don't have to go up for reelection, so.
Where, where are we getting the money?
Megan did a little thing, what did you tell me earlier?
So I did crunch numbers. It was questioned by actually a few of you in regards to where the money would come from. And looking at where we're at in our predicted year end, there is available fund for three to four percent increase for Geo.
And I'd like to say that Geo has really, really stepped up to the plate. That office is very well organized, always smile on his face, even though when I call him, I can see the smile on the face.
And just so everyone's aware, council was given evaluation forms that will be collected at the end of the meeting and actually put in his file. So it was requested to actually provide a full evaluation and understanding of where he's at.
So I think he's well deserved. He's been there a year. Also, everybody gets an evaluation at six months and they get a bump in their pay. He's been there right at a year now and has done a terrific job. So it's well worth it that we keep him here. And not only that, he's attended all the training, not all of it, but most of the training that's required of him and passed every one of them. So. He's got a lot of motivation also. So that's fantastic for the city. And he's quick with the answer, the right answer. So I don't have a problem with that. So any more discussion? Okay, more and.
We'd like that the motion be amended to include the exact percentage of the raise, so just for the record, but also for financial.
Okay, so entertain a motion to amend that.
My move that we amended include three percent.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? None. So let's vote on the amended, amended motion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, let's vote on the original motion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Pose. Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay. There was no smile on his face, just a little embarrassment. But that's good. That's good. Thank you. Okay, city council member comments will start on my left side. Councilman, left, left, that's that way. That's your military left.
I'll yield my left.
Okay.
My right, her left.
Okay, so to my right.
We went to the TML meeting in Mountain Run. Andrews has everything and it makes you not even want to go there anymore. We're going to host a TML meeting out here in October. That's technically municipal league. We're in region four, which comprises probably twenty towns around this area. So it'll be good. Cinco de Mayo was great. Chris has gone, threw a lot of money out of that. Earth Day was good. I'd like to thank Keith, Eddie Abel, Daryl, Chris, everybody that came in here. You know, we, if we could, y'all could just go shopping tomorrow, get online, buy it all. But maybe with this budget, we can get something done.
Thank you. Chris?
I too would like to thank everybody that went out to vote historically high numbers. That's what we need to see. It was a pretty good, clean run and congratulations to Mayor-elect Catherine Eas. We look forward to working with you.
You know, I went to some of the events at the visitor center and I think that place is really looking great. I think they've done a really good job. And I think it's a great central location for everybody to come together. And it, it has turned out to be a really nice, nice place. And I want to thank both Geo and Megan for everything that you do. I mean, every time I come up with a question or I, I call, y'all respond so quickly and I appreciate that. Thank you so much for your hard work.
Again, I want to comment Randy Guzman and his employees for the alleged no violations on their. By the Rural Commission. Fantastic job on no violations. And I'll congratulate Catherine again on her victory last Saturday. And my thoughts and appreciation to all that the city staff does for the city of Alpine. And also for the city council. We're in this for the betterment of this community and I think it shows. In the decisions that we make up here and the direction that we're going. And I know it will continue into the future with all of y'all's continued support and help.
Thank you. Thank you everyone for coming here and of course, thanks for the voters for the record turnout. There have been some real positive changes for the city. We're moving forward and I hope it continues to move in that direction. When I first started running, another little quick thing, I kept hearing from folks that I talked to. Was that's the way it is. That's the way it's going to be. And I kept telling this, there's going to be change. There's going to be change. Five years later, finally, we're in a positive direction with the city forward. So I need to get back to those folks and let them know about that. I think that's, I think one of the biggest accomplishments that, that I've had here at the city. And so I'll let the record speak for itself. Thank you all very much. Entertained a motion to adjourn. A recess rather, I'm sorry. We got a ten minute recess.
Then I amend the motion to recess in the ten minute recess.
Okay, is there a second on that? Okay, should be no discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose like sign.
So we do have cake and we have soda and tea as well. So we join the mayor, congratulate him for his six years.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for yours.
I guess you're retiring, retiring?
Yeah, retiring, retiring.
Thank you for asking, everybody. Don't worry about it.
Glad to see you here again, sir.
Oh, yes, sir.
Your little ones?
Okay, we're back on.
Not yet, I'm sorry.
Okay guys, let's go before we have to recess and go into another session. Okay, entertain the motion, get back into regular session.
We'll get back into regular session.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, in favor? Okay, what time is it you?
Eight fifty-two.
Okay, item number one.
I mean, if we accept item number one.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, any discussion or discussion on it? All those in favor, raise your right hand, pose like sign motion carries. Okay, item number two.
Two, I mean, we postpone item number two.
Okay. Alright, any discussion? Then, okay, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
Okay. That we adjourn.
He's adjourned.
We have to sign this form before we move on.
Yeah.